Good evening. It is 6:14 and I'd like to convene this meeting of the New Britain Board of Education. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance and...
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Kristen can you call her off?
Mr. Merrill Gay.
Here.
Mr. Nicholas Mertesacker.
Here.
Dr. Violet Jimenez-Sins.
Here.
Ms. Monica Dawkins.
Here.
Mr. Anthony Kane.
Here.
Mr. Joseph Listrow.
Here.
Ms. Annie Parker.
Here.
Ms. Diana Reyes.
Here.
Ms. Nancy Rodriguez.
Here.
Ms. Kayla Sanders-Collin.
Here.
Okay, and let's start with a moment of meditation. Okay, and do we have any public participation today?
See if there's anyone called in. So it looks like there are three phone numbers dialed in. The first one is an 860 that ends in 28.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Robert Smedley and I want to thank the board for the opportunity to speak publicly. I call this evening because I am incredibly discouraged. I'm discouraged, I'm disappointed, and quite frankly, I am disgusted as well. Recently, the change for the facilities department has brought about some needed positive changes in our school district that I am willing to embrace and that I actually think are a great decision. We've brought some great people on board who I think are going to help make some good changes in our school district. I do however question some recent decisions and motives and question what direction are we actually going? There's been some hiccups. There are hiccups along the way with change. I understand and respect that. And I'm one of the people who's there to help fix, guide, and move people forward. However, I am absolutely disgusted because I took a week of vacation this week. I don't normally take vacations. I usually hold on to my time. As a matter of fact, I have 60, 6-0 plus built up vacation days. I use my time wisely when I can because I care about what I do and I don't like to miss work. But I decided to take a break. On Friday, I received an email stating that MIS would be packing up my office computer items and move them for me to my new location. I don't understand the angst and the all of a sudden speedy nature that this needed to be conducted. When I stopped by the high school tonight, my office was in absolute disarray. Not the tech's fault, not MIS's fault. However, I feel that I should have been afforded the opportunity as a professional to move my office myself. Incredibly disrespectful. Incredibly. Thank you for your time. I appreciate everything that everyone does on the board.
Okay, so we have somebody said 860 number that ends and it looks like 40?
I believe it's a number that ends in 40. Believe it's *6 to unmute?
Yeah, it's *6 to unmute.
Check that number. Yeah, 860 ends in 840.
Mr. Smedley, if you can hit *6 to mute yourself now. Okay, you want to try the next one there?
Yep, next number is an 860 phone number that ends in 46. *6 to unmute yourself if you'd like to speak during public participation. Again, that's an 860 phone number that ends in 46.
If you'd like to say something, please hit *6 and unmute yourself. Okay. Let's move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening. Thank you. There are a couple of short presentations that I have. I'm going to start first with our preschool presentation. I wanted to give you an update on the status of our, well, what our numbers are currently in the preschool and actually one of our proposed strategies to increase those numbers over the next four or five weeks. So I'm going to turn it over to Chris Badenhoff, Terry Turkot, and Danielle Singleton.
Good evening. Thank you for having the opportunity to speak with you this evening. We are going to be sharing a Google slideshow with you.
Yep. Looks like we're about three slides in. There we go.
Okay, so we wanted to review our enrollment numbers for September and for October and our current numbers right now. So if you'll see for September 2020 coming in, we separated out by the different combinations in our preschool. So you'll see that the Board of Ed School Day, which would be a full day slot, we currently had 46 out of 120 school readiness slots in September, which was 38.3% of our slots. For part day, which is our half-day sessions, we had 55 out of 188 school readiness slots filled, which was 29.3%. We had 60% or 60 students that were receiving services. They were special needs students. Then we also had our key program. We had 31 identified children and 11 peer models for a total of 203 students that were attending our preschool programs. In October, we had 52 of our 120 full day slots filled, which was 43.3%, with a slight increase from September. For our part days, we had 61 out of 188 of our school readiness slots filled, which was 32.4%. And then for our special ed students, we went from 60 to 84 students who are receiving services. For our key students, we had 33 identified children and then 13 peer models. And then we had an increase of about 40 students in October and we had 243 students attending our programs. So we do have a hybrid model where parents are able to connect remotely from home. We also have the option for parents to send their students to school. So despite our hybrid model with allowing them to work from home, it's been very difficult for us to increase our enrollment.
So what we tried to do for you guys tonight is really compare some of the community programs with CSDMB as far as a couple of different areas. And so what we did, we looked at the data from comparable enrollment programs, programs that had enrollment numbers that were closer to the Board of Education. You can see for enrollment through September, and again, I don't have the data for October yet from our community programs, so really I could only compare September. So the Board of Education was at 33% enrollment capacity and the community programs averaged about 45%. And that's throughout all of our school readiness programs. So you know, there's different reasons for some of that, but the Board of Ed was about 12% different from the average of the community programs. When we look at new enrollment, the Board was at 33% and the community was at 16%. And so we were up about 17% for new enrollment and I believe that's a big part of marketing and the team kind of looking at different avenues and reaching out to families. And we'll talk more about that in a little bit. And then as far as the funds that we were granted, Office of Early Childhood has done things a little bit different this year, especially due to COVID, and it's really kind of measuring things in a different way. But out of our 100% that we would like to get obviously for the Board of Education funds, we were granted 61% in September. So obviously falling short based on the enrollment that we're taking in. And the community programs averaged about 74% of their full allotment of funds, bringing it to about a 13% discrepancy. What we were able to do was to look at the October funds for the Board of Education. As you can see at the bottom that there's a 7.1% increase and that's due to the numbers increasing at the Board slightly for the month of October. Again, I don't have the data yet from the community programs as they'll get it to me this week, but you know, hopefully we'll see an increase in others as well. But I think we're on the right track, but it's been proving to be very difficult to get enrollment, certainly with the different strategies we've tried.
So we do have an update on our technology information. The iPads have arrived and they will be given to each student to be used during hybrid and remote learning. Currently, families are using the devices they have or we have provided some packets to families who have requested them. We've sent home and have provided about 55 different packets for families that have requested them. Experiences are made for children throughout the day. They're able to use their device synchronously and asynchronously. So for example, on a Wednesday when we are full remote, there is a schedule that's sent home to families and there are some Google meets where families can check in with the teacher. And then there are some activities that the families are working with alone with their students and there's just that check-in in the morning and the afternoon. We are currently using CSOW in our classes and we've been successful with that model. Parents have been able to send some work samples back to teachers and teachers are able to provide some feedback to parents and just moving those students along and able to plan for the next day of their lessons based on how the students are doing. So our iPads are coming soon. They are, we're very close. We're hoping to get those out to our families very soon. So our goal is to engage as many preschool students as possible in our district programs. For our kindergarten readiness, we'd like to have them ready for kindergarten. All of our students are coming to us. For social, emotional, and executive functioning skill development and for establishing those attendance patterns and routines and habits of mind. So some of the strategies that we've implemented to increase enrollment throughout the month was we made personalized phone calls to families to encourage registration and participation. We used some staff from Central Registration. We also used some teachers who had those connections and those relationships with families already to talk to them and to let them know that it was safe to come into the buildings and to encourage their participation. We've also had interviews with the New Britain Herald and the Hartford Current and we've had featured articles that were published throughout those newspapers. We have placed preschool banners in parks and recs. Through parks and recs, they put them in the different parks throughout the city and we've also put some in our elementary schools. We've posted information on social media. We've had marketing flyers that have gone out in Spanish, English, and Arabic. We've also individualized letters to parents of students that were not registered with disabilities, trying to encourage them to send their students to school to get their services that were necessary. And we've also had our Central Registration staff follow up with families that were previously expressing interest to see if they had changed their mind or you know, they would like to come at this time, if they would like to come remotely, or they would like to come in person. So those were just some of the strategies that we've done to increase enrollment this month. So moving forward, our proposal to the board this evening is to charge but suspend collection of parent fees for the remainder of this school year for enrolled families and newly registering families. Not exceed the state recommended cap size of 16. For prior invitation, we have children turning three who are, we're looking for a priority for our students. So our priority students would be students that are turning three who are currently receiving birth to three services and may qualify for special education services this year. We would like to prioritize our EL students and our returning four-year-olds not yet registered. For our remaining slots, they will be awarded on a first-come basis until the slots are filled. We have about 90 slots to fill and we would like to utilize a waitlist to secure spots for next available openings. So this is our ask of the board this evening. You know, we were able to answer any questions that you may have.
Can I just ask for a clarification? Chris, can you explain just about, again, I think part of it's important that they know what the dollar signs will look like if we forego the cost, but I think that the benefit outweighs the cost. So can you just go over a little bit what we talked about on Friday?
Sure. So the way that OEC is kind of counting, well, let me rephrase it. They're not going by slot utilization like they normally would be, but what they're doing is counting equivalents of children. So as children come into a classroom, it could be any classroom, they count the first 20 children throughout your program as one classroom equivalent and they fund that accordingly. And so they keep doing this, adding up to whatever enrollment you can get. And the struggle that we're finding is that, number one, we're not getting enrollment to begin with because parents are fearful, things like that, which is understandable. But we're also not getting fees charged or collected for some things because of various reasons. You know, parents are keeping them home but want to keep their spot or you know, if we had to close or different things. And so what we're trying to do is think outside the box and really kind of say, okay, in this pandemic, during these times, what can we do to really service our families and our children and really have them come to our program, feel safe, you know, without having to worry so much about the financial burden of that? And so that was what was discussed to bring up that we would waive that fee for them. We still have to, you know, do contracts, but we would waive that fee for those first 90 children to incorporate bringing them into the program and letting them understand that it's safe and that there's different protocols in. And with our marketing and different things, hopefully we can get the numbers that we need to at least get our full funding through school readiness. And then we would just right now have to eat the costs as far as tuition collected from the families. And that would be for this year is what we're looking at for this school year. So you know, we're taking a hit either way, so we're trying to be flexible and look at, you know, how can we get them the help that they need, the education that these kids need, and get them into our doors.
Thanks, Chris.
Chris, could you give folks an understanding of what we get from the state for each child who is enrolled versus what we're getting in parent fees for that child on a monthly basis on average?
Yeah, so definitely the, I don't have all, you know, the numbers in front of me right now, so I apologize for that. But certainly for tuition, it's a sliding fee scale. So it could be anywhere from $8 to $95 for many of our families. Whereas, and that's per week, whereas per month, we're getting about $8,000 from them as reimbursement from school readiness. So really on that end, it makes more sense for us to get our school readiness dollars in place and get our full funding from school readiness and take that little bit of a hit on the parent fees. Because the fees go by their family size and then their income. And so that's a lot, a lot less that we're probably taking out in hopes that we can fill on the other end.
So just because it's $8,000 per year, so that's, so for the school year.
Per year, I'm sorry.
So roughly $1,000 a month for, from the state. And some parents are paying eight bucks a week, so that would be, you know, 32 bucks a month.
Right.
So the trade-off of the 32 bucks in order to get the 1,000 bucks is the math.
The difference, yeah.
Now, when you suspend collection, are you also still enrolling people in care for kids? Or do we do that?
We don't.
We don't do that?
No.
We're not in that group, no.
No.
Okay. Okay. And then just a question of, have you had any conversations with the community providers about this? Like, are they going to feel like all of a sudden you're undercutting them by giving people free childcare?
I personally have not yet.
No. We're waiting to talk to you first.
We did discuss that and we're going to, we're going to present to you first and see, see where we get from there.
Yeah, I mean, so the other big issue here is that when you still are a four-day-a-week program, nobody there on Wednesdays, it still doesn't work for a parent to use this as childcare to go to work.
If I may, I mean, they still have the option of doing that one day a week in the YMCA after school. So you know, there might be a fee associated with that, but that's something that we can talk about too, you know. So they do have an option of doing a full day and maybe it's not their workday, but it's every day, Monday through Friday, and again, use the YM for the Wednesday. And I think that the community was doing better because they do have those schedules that accommodate a parent, a working parent outside the home.
Yep.
And I think that's what we're taking a hit. That and I will say too that we are, we are not saying all students can have transportation, but hardship cases, we are saying yes, we're going to transport the students. Because we're not trying to put any barriers at all for our parents. We still probably are not the most marketable program because our hours are reduced compared to HRA, the YW, you know, et cetera. But at least this is something more. We know the kids are home.
And so with that many fewer kids, do we still have the same number of teachers, same number of staff? Or are we down on any?
We do have the same number of staff right now. Some are working flexibly, you know, doing some of this parent outreach for us and doing that if the numbers don't warrant it. And we, and we knew that we could borrow some of our pre-K teachers if needed for our kinder. We have not had to do that yet. Because we want, we don't want, we don't want to do any permanent moves because if they do come back, you know, we won't have staff, so.
And sort of flip side of getting more people enrolled, if the pandemic heats up and we end up going all virtual, the plans there are that we've already got everybody sort of used to it and we'll have everybody with iPads, so.
Yes. And again, it's week to week, right? But if we could get another month of being in person and we can bring in three-year-olds or four-year-olds and quite honestly, we're really looking at our B to threes, our Ls, and our kids with special needs first. And then, but we want to be fair to that family. The invites will go to them first though and then whatever's left will fill up on a first come first serve. But if we can get them in for a month and they connect with an adult.
Enroll your kid in preschool and get an iPad.
What's that?
Enroll your kid in preschool and get an iPad.
Yeah, yeah, it's not so bad.
Yes, it's a loner, but you know, you get one.
Nick has his hand up just a second.
What I can say to that though, just to add, is that the community programs are excited about the iPads coming to students, especially like the Y who has kids coming after school and things like that or working during the day. They're excited about that too because they've been working with kids on no devices, trying to get them either services at their location or different things. So I know that some of them are excited about that.
I was going to say, you had talked about the low end of the $8 a week, but even at the high end, we're only talking about $100, you know, dollars a week or 400 and change a month. So we'd still be, even if we took that as a hit, we're still getting more back from the state. But I also, I also think that it, like, I know that even in distance learning, last year, my daughter was in the preschool program and it definitely provided some structure and some needed interaction with people who are outside the home and not mom or dad and even through a camera interacting with peers. So just having those opportunities for some of these kids, I think, is important. It's not the same as in person, but, and it's definitely not the same. I can't imagine preschool is anything I get used to, but it's something to get these kids interacting around peers. So I, I could support doing this.
Tonight, I mean, I just feel like it's all, it's so difficult, especially for the working parents because if everything ends up going virtual, they're still going to need childcare. So the community programs are going to work best for them because they know that they still have a spot where the children can physically go to in that case. But I think anything we can do to help the parents out, parents who are out of work, parents who are struggling right now, to help them financially to get the children in here, anything we can do to ease that, ease that for them is worthwhile.
And Diana, I might say too, you know, if in the event we do have to go full remote, and again, it all depends on the governor's call. We don't, we don't really know. But you know, that's not to say that our partners with the YMCA who have been, you know, can't help to maybe kick in and make sure that if we're keeping kids apart, we're keeping them farther apart. We have more people to distribute kids to. Do you know what I mean?
I was just concerned, like, for example, parents who may not make a lot of money. You know, the difference between an $8 a week program and then like a community program which may cost five times, 10 times that, will they still be able to pay the same amount? Or will there be something in place to help them financially to pay that difference if that were to happen?
And I think that that's, Kevin sent my email today. I am starting to look at ways, if some parents have to scholarship or are looking for scholarship dollars, how we might help our parents who need scholarship. And that might just be dress down days. It might be something, right? A staff.
And actually, once they get into community programs, they would be able to apply for care for kids as well.
Then too. Thank you, guys. Any more questions?
Yep.
Thank you.
So we'll need to have a motion to add that to the agenda?
We could. We weren't sure how, how to proceed with this, but yes.
Yeah, we need to add it to the agenda, but we probably should get into business first.
Right.
Just don't let us leave without doing it.
Can you add, and then just vote out later?
Well, yeah, yeah, motion to add an item to the agenda, discussion and action on waive your, waive, waiving preschool fees for the remainder of the school year.
Second.
Motion to add to the agenda.
Is that a non-deviable issue? I don't know. I'm just asking.
I honestly don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to look it up.
Okay, so we have a seconded motion.
Just to add the item to the agenda.
Just to add it to the agenda. Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will add that to the agenda.
Can I just finish up with some of the other, just small things? At every level of the organization, we do have strategy groups in place now to reengage the disengaged, right? We have a pre-K, we've got an elementary, and we have a secondary. I talked very briefly to you just before about a Facebook Live event that we'll be doing. I'll invite you all to it on the next couple of weeks. So, you know, we recognize, we recognize there's disengagement. It's not the same reason as it was last year. Last year was a lot to do with technology. That's not the issue this year so much. Now it's just getting kids hooked in. I did put for you here, there's a couple of things. A new report that we've added to the, for the board is to look at our COVID rates by school. It's better for you to look at it electronically, I promise, because to try to read it otherwise, it's impossible. So I wanted you to know about that. Food distribution. When our cohort A or cohort B leave, they do leave with five meals with them and, you know, they take that with them so that there's food for them over the coming days. And that we are moving on to public safety, of course, at the high school, which was brought up by, I believe, a resident a couple of months back. There was an issue around that, so I did give you an update on the status of that. And that's about it. Oh, the last thing is, I have been meeting, I've met with about thirty pre-K through twelve teachers over the last two weeks to just get feedback on the growing pains of this hybrid environment, how we can help. And I think we're coming around a couple of strategies that might help our teachers maybe reduce stress a little bit. More to come on that. So that's about it.
All right, committee reports. Finance?
Finance, they're not really categorized as finance, but there was a lot of academic approval for some curriculum items that are on the consent agenda.
And is there a walk-in?
There is a walk-in. Hold on a minute. You know, Gil likes to get money. It is a million-dollar, right? Yeah, million-dollar funding through general improvements to Alliance District's school buildings grant. These funds are to be used for school buildings and ground repair and improvements that are not reimbursable through other Office of School Construction grants. Administration is requesting a voidification approval for 2020-21 Alliance Grant.
Okay.
Yes.
So we'll add, need a motion to add that to the agenda as well? Okay.
Yeah. So a motion to add that to the agenda for approval.
Okay. Any opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, anything else? Nope.
No.
Okay. Any personnel?
Yes, we have a few things on consent agenda for personnel. And we have one walk-in for personnel for extracurricular.
Okay, so make a motion to add that to the agenda as well?
Yes, I move that we add these items to the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions? All in favor of adding this item to the agenda?
Just for clarification, the item we're adding is just the stipend position?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, add that to the agenda as well? Okay, policy?
No report at this time.
Okay, curriculum?
We have quite a few things on the agenda for approval, including some several different professional development things, like professional development for culturally and, for culturally responsive teaching. And textbooks for our world language program that frankly was a shame, just haven't been able to be done before. So you will see all those things on here.
Okay. And board reports. Anybody have anything that they want to announce? Tell the world about?
I mean, I'm not sure if anyone is aware, but tomorrow is Election Day. You might know.
What?
You might have seen some ads. And regardless of who you're supporting at state, federal, or local, well, not local, but state or federal levels, please, everyone, go out and vote. That's all, if you haven't already.
Thanks for telling me. I appreciate that we might.
And I just want to say, I, I thought it was nice that with everything that's going on, that people, the teachers and the staff decide to dress up for Halloween. That was a nice thing for the kids, and a pick-me-up for us, too.
Okay, any other board reports? All right, let's move into the presentation on the overview of the.
Cafeteria Fund.
Cafeteria Fund, yes, okay. There you go.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, I'll share my screen and that presentation. During the 2007-2008 school year, the State Department of Education conducted a comprehensive audit of the school district's food service program. A district failed the audit, and I was assigned to work in collaboration with the State Department of Education to make the necessary changes to bring the district into compliance. In 2016, under my recommendation, New Britain was among the first districts to implement the community eligibility provision. Since that time, I've taken responsibility for all aspects of the program and have helped it become a well-managed, profitable arm of our food service program. The child nutrition programs offered in the district include the school breakfast program, the lunch program, the after-school snack program, the fresh fruit and vegetable program, the dinner program, and the summer food service program. On this slide, we have a ten-year financial history. Looking at our fund balance in fiscal year 2010-11, we see a eight-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar fund balance. Moving forward to 2016-2017, that is the first year that we implemented the community eligibility provision, and we see a three-point-eight-million-dollar fund balance. Fast-forwarding to today, we see a ten-million-dollar fund balance. These funds can only be expended on our food service operations, and we're currently looking at formalizing a capital improvement plan, which we will further discuss on a slide further ahead in this presentation. One note that I did want to make, looking at the profit-loss column, if we look at 2018-19 versus 2019-20, we do see quite a jump in the profit. And I just wanted to make a note that that is due to the COVID-19 emergency feeding program. And we would normally see a one-point-to-two-million-dollar profit. And once we resume back to our normal operations, I believe that that's the number that we'll see again. So in 2000, I'm sorry.
I, I just wanted to point out, just in case people invested, if you look at that year one and you look at the jump just from the previous year, which was a high part, a high point previously, the four-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand, and once we were able to start that community eligibility program, which it was just a fantastic way not only to help improve our school lunch, but it destigmatized school lunch by making it eligible for everybody. Just that one year over just stood out to me, and I just, sorry for interrupting, but I couldn't help but bring that up.
Thank you. As previously mentioned, in 2007-2008, the State Department of Education conducted an audit of the district's child nutrition program, and the district failed the audit. Then in 2007, 2000, I'm sorry, 2008, 2009, they conducted a follow-up progress audit, and we passed, and we approved the new district process. We experienced many issues prior to the implementation of CEP. Some of these include the free reduced applications not being submitted by parents. The students accumulated large outstanding balances. There was an inability to collect outstanding balances. These outstanding balances could not be paid from, from the cafeteria fund, and it was the district's responsibility to cover these outstanding balances. In the slides ahead, we'll look at areas that have had a positive impact on the lunch program and how we will move forward to continue to grow our program. Some of these areas include the community eligibility provision, the centralization of program responsibilities, the centralization of the food service management company oversight, promotion and development of the program, as well as expansion and growth of the program. I'll leave this slide up a minute. There's just a bit of information, so I'll give you a minute so that you can read the slide. Okay, so as you can see, there are many benefits to having the community eligibility provision in place in the district. These are the applications that were required to submit annually to the State Department of Education. We've got the school nutrition program application. We have free internship agreement. We have the summer food service program application. We have six cents certification. We've got the fresh fruit and vegetable, the dinner program, the healthy food certification, the community eligibility provision, and the Buy American Act. And a note that failure to submit program applications and reports in a timely manner result in an audit finding. The State Department of Education requests a corrective action plan and may take fiscal action when an audit finding occurs. There are several state and federal requirements shown below that need to be prepared and submitted to the State Department of Education on an annual basis. So these documents listed here are documents that I prepared individually. Some are posted on the website, and some we need to post on our website. We have state and federal reporting requirements. On the left, we see a list of annual reports, and on the right, we have a list of monthly reports. I just want to make a note on the monthly reporting. The ED 103 is a claim reimbursement form. So for all of our programs, I need to enter the meal counts for each site. Then they need to be verified. I have to reconcile, and then I submit them to the state. Oversight of our food service management company. So on the left, we have a list of documents that I have to submit annually to the State Department of Education for, in regards to our food service management company. We do have to go out to bid every five years. I have to meet on a monthly basis with our food service company. I have to complete an onsite review form for both the breakfast and the lunch program, which consists of observing both breakfast and lunch service at each site. And then I have to complete the required State Department of Education forms. I also have to complete the form for the food service management company on an annual basis. I manage the cafeteria fund. I make the deposits. I enter the invoices. They're processed for payment. I track all revenues and expenditures. The account is reconciled on a monthly basis. I ensure that we follow all federal procurement standards, and I apply for and track all of our mini grants. To future promotion and development of the program, we will continue to work with the school nutrition consultant. Once we resume our normal operation, we'll continue with taste testing and promotion days. And one note to make is that the district has been recognized by the Food Management Magazine as being one of the most innovative for food service during a pandemic. That's a great accomplishment on our part. Future improvements, expansion and growth of the program. We are in process of developing a capital improvement plan, which will be presented in the future. And due to the growth of the program, we are looking to expand to meet the current needs and to continue to grow by building a warehouse and a central kitchen in the district.
I have a quick.
And that completes the presentation.
Now, I know way back, it feels like two years ago, that we approved the plan for Pulaski to start to build the storage, to get the food off the floor, out of, out of the hallway. Are we able to use any of that ten million to up our, like, organic offerings to our students? Or like different food service, or is that up to the vendor to do that?
We can certainly do that, and, and I do want to make a note that we are currently purchasing any items that we can that meet the USDA standards that are organic. We do purchase organic. Of course, that doesn't apply right now where we are still serving under the emergency eating program, so the meals are prepackaged. But once we do resume our normal operations, we will continue to purchase organic and anytime we can.
And when you say organic, it's like not project organic. It's pure organic, not just one thing in the label type of thing. I mean, I know that's not you. Is that a, is that a?
Correct.
We, but we could use some of that ten million, not just for facilities updates. You could use it towards food purchases or.
Absolutely, and that is our intention. We are looking at what the consultant had started, but we were kind of at a standstill, again, due to the emergency program that's in place right now, but that is correct. We're looking at our, our meals, our offerings. We're looking at targeting the middle schools and the high schools with increasing our, our offerings. I, we do realize that there are some issues with the older students and the portion sizes and the kids not being satisfied, so we are working on that. So the goal is to continue to meet the USDA standards, but somehow incorporate additional items that we can offer to the students. So absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Hi, Diane. Is there a plan in place to receive feedback from parents or students on what they're receiving? When you can give the feedback.
Absolutely. So there are committee meetings. Again, right now, they're not being held. But yes, there are committee meetings where parents and students are part of, of the committee, and they, they are able to voice any concerns or any questions or make any requests. Also, the promotion days that are offered by Witsen's are all suggestions that they receive from the students. And then, and then they incorporate them into their menus. And of course, if, if they receive positive feedback, they will continue to serve them or they tweak them, or, you know, whatever it is that they can do to, you know, for the students so that they can continue to engage them and offer, offer meals that, that are pleasing to them. But we do have intentions of issuing a district-wide survey. Again, once we resume normal operations, we will be doing that as well.
Okay. I have a question. Oh, sorry. Yes, where are meals currently prepared and how much of a load will the central kitchen take on?
So currently, we have, we have the high school, we have Roosevelt, and, and what, what's happening is, in the main hub right now. and, and what, what's happening is, in the main hub right now is, is the high school. They're preparing the meals, and then they're being trucked out to the locations. So the central kitchen will obviously prepare all meals for all schools, and then from that central kitchen, they will be trucked out to the locations. And what will happen is with the central kitchen, we will, we'll have 10,000 square feet of kitchen area. So we will be able to increase our production. We'll be able to make more foods in-house, prepare more meals in-house. And we'll be able to actually be a little more creative also with our offerings, because we'll, we'll have more room for storage and just more room to prepare the meals.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I was gonna say, I know that there have been some communities that have explored with the idea of bringing back, like the in-school kitchen, but I know with our facilities, that's not necessarily the most feasible route to go. But I'm excited that the centralized kitchen may afford us some similar opportunities for a lot more fresher cooked, same-day type prepared things. I just had a quick question about the oversight slide. You said the onsite review forms that you have to fill out, is that, is that a onsite visit that you have to do to each program per month? And how many different sites are we talking about? I'm just trying to imagine how much time you have to spend running around.
Sure, so yes, so basically that does consist of me going, we, we have 18 sites. So I have to visit all 18 sites. I have to go to observe their breakfast, while they're serving breakfast and while they're serving lunch.
Every month?
It's, it's twice a year.
Okay, okay, cute.
So, but it is time-consuming, because it is, it's 18 locations.
Yeah.
So it's 18 days that I have to take, that I have to observe breakfast and then lunch. So, yeah.
Any further questions? Okay.
I, I just want to, I just want to commend you for the hard work and all you've done to bring some extra money to the system, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ian, I just want to point out, look at the Facebook feed after, just so you can get some comments. Some of the families care about this, right? This is a, it's a topic.
Right.
Food's close to people's heart. Thank you, Ian.
Thank you.
All right, let's move into the consent agenda. You've all had a chance to look at the consent agenda. Is there anything that anybody wants to pull off the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of the consent agenda? No, we just, we cast one vote in favor of the consent agenda. It's passed. Okay, let's move into new business. And we have the, approving the new calendar.
Motion to approve the 2021 Board of Education meeting calendar.
Second.
Okay. For folks who don't have it in front of them, it basically has us continuing meetings the way we are doing it now, here in the lecture hall. And if we are so lucky as to have the pandemic recede and be able to resume in-person meetings with an audience, we would continue here. But we're not really counting on that. So, any questions about the agenda?
I know there was recently something raised about meetings that start before 6:00, and I know that we've sort of, since we don't, you know, conduct regular business at our, at our committee meetings, that we have not typically held them at 6:00 or later. But I was wondering if as a board, we felt we should bump those to the 6:00 o'clock time and just move those forward by a half hour each.
The committee meetings, there's something...
The committee meetings.
I would agree with you on that.
Okay, so to change those 5:30 policy meetings to 6:00, and the curriculum meeting to, to 7:00?
Seven.
As long as that's okay with the two of you. All right. Okay, so we'll make that amendment, we need to have a second.
Motion to amend the 2020, 2021 Board of Education calendar so that all policy committee meetings will start at 6:00 p.m. All curriculum committee meetings will start at 7:00 p.m.
Second.
Any questions, comments? What's that?
Thank God it's not 2020 anymore.
Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we need to vote on the calendar itself.
Were we going to do the same thing for personnel and finance?
Ah, okay, I didn't realize that they were...
I mean, that's...
Yep.
I've always started later, so that will just push us to 6:45. Doesn't matter, because I'm here anyway, so...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm okay with it where it is, but if you, to be consistent...
Let me ask you this, because personnel typically goes earlier, and sometimes we sit here and wait till... Can we say 6:30? Finance starts at 6:30?
Yeah.
You can set whatever time you want.
We're usually done.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, my, usually goes quick. It takes a little bit longer.
Okay, so we're going to amend the Personnel Committee meetings to start at 6:00, and the Finance Committee meetings to start at 6:30.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion?
A motion to update the Personnel meetings to start at 6:00, and Finance meetings to start at 6:30 for 2021 calendar.
Okay, we have a second on that. Any further discussion, questions, et cetera? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, any opposed? All right, so now let's actually vote on the now amended twice calendar. Is there, we, do we have a second for...
It's already second, right, okay.
So, all in favor of the amended calendar?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let's move on to the next item, which is... Hard to see, because I'm...
The Policy Committee moves to adopt the following policies: 4118.112, 4218.112, and 5145.51. All of these are prohibition of sexual discrimination, sex discrimination, sexual harassment. Two, the first two are personnel, the second one is students.
Okay.
Second.
We have a seconded motion, any discussion on this item?
Just, just to clarify, we are separating these out from our broader harassment policy due to changes that have been made to the laws governing, governing the process for sexual harassment. I'm sure Mr. Spaulding or Ms. Manning could answer any additional questions on it, but that's why we're breaking these out. And then we're also going to be revisiting and revising our existing policy that deals with all other forms of harassment at a later date.
Okay.
If I can speak, I mean, these laws promulgated from the Department of Ed. May, and districts are required to follow the new guidelines which took effect in August for the federal government.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? It's weird having to put my back to the table. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Move to the next.
Oh, personnel. Approved new job disruption and new position request for 1.0 academic counselor for New Britain High School. Academies, I'm saying academic. So these are...
Second.
Yep. Okay, so we have a seconded motion, go ahead.
Oh, so, so this position is for the academies, which is different from the regular school counselor. I don't know if personnel wants to give us more information on it.
Mary Ellen, can you speak to it? I'm not sure Sandra's here.
Didn't look like it.
No, she's...
Okay, so...
But Mary Ellen can, I mean, I can even speak to her.
Oh, is she here?
Oh, you are, sorry.
No, that's okay. Hello, everyone. And Mary Ellen just through, I just see, I see her popping on and off as well. Hi, this is Sandra Stanford. And I'm here to talk with Damon Paris in collaboration in regards to establishing the Academy's counselor position at New Britain High School. Once a month, we meet with our advisory boards for each of the four academies, and as the academies at New Britain High School are growing, there is a need for a more focused attention given to students in the academy to ensure they follow the Perkins and the state requirements in curate act and open sequence course curriculum. So the request for the position is to follow the guidelines and provide a more focused dedication to the students in the academies.
Okay. Any questions about this?
Just as a point of discussion, I think the academies have been tremendously successful at our high school and really are one of our shining, like, one of the shining stars of what we have going on there. And so I fully, fully support giving them what they need to make this program continue to grow.
Yeah, I would just say to echo that, I mean, my son graduated 2016, and he came through the academies, and, and to no fault of their own, because the academies are relatively new, he was only able to graduate for, from one, even though he was in both, because he just, he didn't have somebody really directing him in those courses that he needs, and that, this person will help to solve some of that problem.
Okay. All right, any further questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay.
Academics.
The next one is for four positions as district-wide parent educators for deaf or hearing impaired students.
Second.
Okay.
Are you, you want to talk about it, Mr. Spaulding?
Sure. So these parents will be able to support district-wide students, students of the deaf, students who have a hearing, will be supporting the teacher of the deaf rather. We were able to bring back this year four students who were outplaced in therapeutic programs because of their disability, and that's a savings of $266,000. These parent educators will be supporting those four students as well as others throughout the district.
Okay. Any further questions on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item E. Who's making this motion?
A motion to approve a contract between the New Britain Board of Education and Monseigneur of Mouseki Manner for the clinical experience in the nurses' training program.
Second.
Okay. All right. Do you want to explain this?
Hello, my name is Jenny, I am the new CNA teacher at New Britain High School. Very happy to be here as a representation of the Health Academy as well as our amazing nursing students that we have. I'm a registered nurse and a graduate of New Britain High School, so this is full circle for me to be back at my old position. So this is simply a contract renewal. We have worked with Monseigneur Bunchausen in the past, and the only language that had changed within the contract is the immunization portion. They wanted to specify a little bit more in terms of the immunizations that the students and clinical instructors require in order to do clinical at the facility, in addition to weekly COVID testing as a requirement for our students and our clinical instructors as well.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
So, item F.
Item F.
Make a motion to approve purchase order and bid waiver for COVID-19-related signage from SignPro in the amount of $73,334.50.
Okay.
Second.
All right, second motion, any questions?
I'm just curious why we didn't go out to bid, I know Nick maybe...
That was the same question I had, this is coming as a bid waiver, and I'm curious whether or not we got any competing votes on this or went out to bid.
I will have Sandra, Sandra, can you talk to the signage?
Hi there, yes. Just a clarification, this is the digital signage at New Britain High School?
The digital? Digital signage for COVID?
No, this is...
This is item F.
COVID-related dollars.
COVID, COVID-related signage from SignPro.
So, Sandra, it's written COVID-19-related signage.
It looks like all the stickers for the walls, the bathrooms, that stuff. I mean, it is pretty, I don't, I just don't understand why it didn't go out for, or did it go out for bid, and this was just the highest?
Lowest.
Lowest.
Sorry, lowest.
This was...
Sorry, I'm sorry, I misspoke, it is for the, the COVID-related signage from SignPro.
I know, I, what I can speak to is SignPro has been a very competitive partner of the Britain school system and have supported the work we've done from all avenues. But it, it, this, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if this is digital signage.
It's...
I can't, here.
Matt, go ahead, sorry, I'm sorry, that's my mistake.
This was for the COVID signage that we had to put up in all the schools before school started. This is from the state guidelines that wanted us to put up all these signs. We had went through SignPro because they were the quickest turnaround time. We had about a four-week turnaround on this. So in order to get the signs posted in the schools, we had to go through SignPro for that.
It's a bill?
Yes.
So, for clarification, this is, this has already been done, this is just the bill?
Pretty much, wow.
It usually goes the other way around.
Yeah.
Yeah. So he points to me, now I'll think of the couple of them, but, you know, we did get dollars from our CARES Act dollars, this is where it's coming from. It was money specifically allocated for these purposes. And, and Matt's right, with everything going on and the planning and the quick turnaround to have it all out, we had COVID packages going out to every building. And even then, it wasn't fast enough, because that was the one thing people were kind of screaming about.
Actually, I'm looking at the date of this, this was back in August, correct? So this would have fallen under summer authority.
She's just giving me a hard time.
You used it.
Yeah.
Well, no, it's... Since bid waivers are all...
See, my glasses are going fast.
That's right, because we changed the amount this year for the first time ever, right?
Well, no, summer authority for bid waivers and purchases, like for actual things within the budget, that's different than like staff hiring where we've...
We always used to have a cap.
Yeah, for staff hiring, but...
And bid waivers. This is the first year we did it without a bid waiver. But it's past the point, because we have the signs, we have to pay people.
And I, and I have to say also, we looked at doing it in-house, but you needed a durable, a quality thing to put down on the concrete. There are things on concrete, on the floors, on everything, so it wasn't just paper signs that we were making, yeah.
Yeah, I apologize, I had missed the invoice date. Yeah, I apologize, I had missed the invoice date in reading this, so this is, this is for a signage that we already have in place, this is not additional, because that was my next question is, why are we spending this much on additional sign, okay?
You'd have to.
Thank you.
You'd have to, you got no choice.
All right, so did we determine that this was, happened under summer authority and doesn't need approval? Or are we going to go ahead and approve it anyway?
Well, it's on the agenda, mine will approve it, and we just got to pick.
All right. So, any further questions about this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Let's move on.
G, make a motion to approve purchase order and bid waiver for service work by First Line Electric LLC in the amount of $26,966.87. The source is cafeteria account.
Second.
Okay. Do we have?
Same question?
So I'm going to look to Yan Alfonso and Kevin Deion and Kevin Kane to talk to this one?
Yeah, Kevin should be on, so I think he can respond to that.
I don't see him, I think...
Yeah, I'm here, I can speak to the technical aspect, so I think earlier there was a discussion regarding Pulaski and the kitchen and the centralization. To continue with that, which is something we would like to do, we're still going to need to upgrade the electrical, so we had to put a 400 amp service. At the same time, we've run out of refrigerated space, we are maxed out across the district, we had to add two of cooler boxes, refrigerated boxes, those are the portables you see around the district. Pulaski could not support that, so we had to upgrade the transformer. The good thing is that this transformer, it will allow us to go ahead and do the other projects, we won't have to upgrade the electrical, so we'll be ready to support any centralization and kitchen expansions that we do at that location or that site. The reason why time was of the essence was that the USDA was requiring that, and I think Dan can speak for this more as well as Whitson's, we had to take delivery of certain stock and we didn't have time to R and P it out, so we had to get the electrical upgraded and get the new boxes in so we could accept the orders.
Okay.
When, the work is already done?
The work is started, it's not completed yet, we have the boxes, we're still waiting for that volt, the volt panel, was it the 240, I have to look at the invoice, we're waiting for one panel to come in, that'll be in the next two days, and then we'll do the full connection. Boxes are there, we just don't have the connectivity.
Okay. Further questions?
No. Did we not know about this before? Okay. Right, you would think we anticipated that, that we don't have the right, anyway. So we don't run into, maybe we could have got something to do it cheaper, we could have gone out to bid. Pass the point.
Do you want Kevin to?
Do you want Kevin to address that?
No, no, no.
Okay. I sense frustration, but any other questions? Okay. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Item H, approve purchase order and bid waiver for installation of iWAVE ionizers, $27,857.19, COVID-19 finance, the funding source. Is this summer as well?
They came in late, everything was coming in late. Kevin, do you want to talk about the ionizers at Smalley?
Yes, I will. So as you know, Smalley windows do not open, there was concern there, we wanted to make sure we get the boat, most, best technology out there to make sure, mitigate any risk for the ventilation system. During this time, this was August, September timeframe, these ionizers were just not available. I will say ESC was able to secure enough for us to do Smalley schools, this is for 23 ionizers. This included the installation, they had to go to each duct area, rooftops as well as downstairs, ducts, and cut a two-inch hole and then run some low voltage wire. So this was to outfit the entire school, so as this, this work has already been completed, but Smalley has 23 ionizers throughout all the HVAC systems, and this again mitigates with UV light the potential for virus dispersion.
Okay.
Nick, that is...
I feel like we had a presentation about these, correct?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes, you did. We did know about the availability, they were too tight, this is the one we were able to locate was the iWAVE.
So Nick, it was the evening that I presented where we were with exhaust fans in the district, if you recall?
Yep.
And the heavy lift we needed to get the building open, and that was the night that we talked about the ionizers as well.
Yeah, so that was before...
It was, everything's slow and delayed and coming.
Okay.
So this was essentially something we thought was, would be covered under summer authority, but...
Yeah.
Because it took a long time to show up.
We're approving it now.
We're approving it now, so. Any further questions on this? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next.
Approve the, make a motion to approve the purchase order bid waiver and MOU contract between Consolidated School District of New Britain and Latinos in Action for $25,500.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Still discussion on this?
There was no committee review?
It's about time. We've talked about...
This has been a while.
Actually supposed to already be in place this year, and with all of this stuff, it didn't happen, so I, I don't know details because I'm just seeing it, I'm here now, but I'm happy to see it because I know it's something that I brought to Nancy years ago when I met Jose, the, the founder of this...
Right.
At a conference, and then we have, at that time, we only had one Connecticut district that was doing it, and now there, there are like five or something, so, so we've started doing it very quickly, so I don't know exactly what components this includes, and I, like to hear that, but I know that there's a course, there's a course and a community component, so there's a course for students to take to learn leadership skills and things like that, and then they put it back into our community by mentoring students at the elementary school and things like that as part of the course. But it's similar to like, like the teacher preparation type class that they teach here where there's a national curriculum that you use, and that's why you have to pick, you know, you have, they have their pillars and their whatever, there's a structure to it so that it's done.
And it must be done six through 12, and so you're right, we had started it, COVID hit, everything hit, we do have a dedicated teacher at the high school who teaches the course now, and, and Wanda, oh, she's here.
I'm here.
I keep looking up, but I don't know my...
Good morning, everyone.
Okay.
Hi.
I have questions.
So we, so we have to have a six through eight component as well to feed into, and they're very specific about the students entering the course and what, what, what the profile is of the student who's entering, and it's around advocacy, that's it, and, and LIA, I think for me, what, what sold me is I was able to go to a, an annual conference that's run by students, the keynote speaker was a, is an LIA student from Florida, they actually came up, so it's about networking too, moving beyond New Britain's borders, even Connecticut's borders to start networking and, and showing the possibilities for our, our Latinos in terms of advocating and, and, go ahead, Wanda, I probably didn't do justice.
They had a conference here at CCSU, which is, and they, they go by Arizona, that was big.
Yes, the end goal is to empower Latino youth to lead and strengthen their communities, so, you know, they have four pillars, personal and cultural assets, excelling in education, serving the community, and developing leadership skills. What I like about, best about the program is that it, one of the requirements is that we pair the students with younger learners at the elementary schools, and they can serve as tutors, but they have other responsibilities within the communities.
Okay.
Have any questions?
No, I think that sounds good.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions? All right, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
But not least.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the budget transfers for textbooks and online resources from Vista Higher Learning for oral language programs in the amount of $201,766.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, Diana? All right, any discussion?
We already approved the purchase on the consent agenda because it, so this is just booming the money over to actually pay for it.
Item F on consent.
Okay.
I also would note that this is a larger purchase than what was originally brought forward, as people in curriculum and finance probably are aware, because we decided that we really need the new textbooks for all of our Spanish and not just the heritage course because they haven't been replaced in how many years?
Oh, it was a while. Lord have mercy, my daughter wasn't even born yet. And she driving. That's not even a joke.
Yeah, I should say, it's all languages.
All languages, so we all...
Right, the French too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I misspoke.
No, it's okay.
All right, so any further conversation about this? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion to accept the grant approval. Is there another thing we added to?
Yeah, but that got taken away at time.
Yep, okay.
So make a motion to accept the grant approval for $1,080,000 for general improvements to Alliance District School Building Grants.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this? As you can see, this is about boiler removal and replacement at four schools. Okay. Seeing no discussion on this, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we have another one. We have another issue that we said we were going to put on the agenda.
Motion to waive the fees for Consolidated School District in New Britain's preschool program for the 2020, 2021 academic school year.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And Ms. Parker had one.
Yes, we have one for an extra curricular position for the girls' basketball team to hire a new coach.
Okay.
Second.
All right, and the amount on that is, so the, this is a...
It's a stipended position for basketball coach, that's already set forth in the contract.
In the contract, okay, yep. So any conversation about this?
We see a pointy...
Earl Piper, who was the coach here at one time, and she's back.
Okay. All right, so seeing no further conversation on this, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.